But readjourn from our closed session. If I can have everyone come to order, please. I'll ask the attorney for any comments on our closed session.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The City Council was in closed session this evening, first on conference with legal counsel on initiation of litigation. City Council authorized commencement of litigation against David Clancy, the First Hemp Bank and Distribution Network, Julian Gonzalez, and other named defendants relating to the operation of a medical marijuana dispensary in violation of city laws. The city was also in closed session this evening on conference, I'm sorry, on public employee performance evaluation, and that item has not been concluded, and the council will reconvene in closed session at the end of the open session this evening.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the regular City Council meeting, October the nineteenth, at seven oh one. Liz, if I can have the roll call, please.
Councilwoman Payne, here.
Here.
Powers, here.
Shelton.
Here. I'd like everyone to rise for a moment of silence, for a silent prayer, followed by the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the repeated justice for all. Thank you. If we could have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety, and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable System. Tonight's meeting can also be seen on Channel fourteen, and will be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address councils should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Agenda approval additions and or deletions, are there any, council? None? We will move forward with, we don't have any presentations and public comment.
Under Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public, or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheets to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Dan Jimenez. After Mr. Jimenez, Fred Gaal.
Dan Jimenez, and I live in the city. Tonight, I'd like to address my comments directly to Don Haines up there. Don, I want to say thanks for the work that you've done these last four years. I didn't know if you were going to be coming to the next council meeting, so I'm taking this opportunity tonight to say thanks, and also for keeping your word on Measure R. I really appreciate it. It's really gratifying when you see a politician that can talk the talk and walk the walk. And I don't know why you're not seeking reelection, but I hope that you reconsider in two thousand twelve, because a lot of us out there would like to see you sitting up there again. So, that's all I have to say, because I feel really honored to know you, and seeing the good job that you've been doing up there, even though you've hit some roadblocks and everything else, so, thanks, Don.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate those nice words.
Mr. Gaal.
Thanks.
Good evening, Fred Gaal, City of Galt. I'm really just here to update on the mosquito district. There are still few positive bird samples coming in, and actually, the state has shut down its lab, or they're not taking, they've shut down the eight hundred number in the lab. We will take them if you call our district. We're doing our own in-house. Supposedly, it should be gone by now, but they had two show up this week, so it's still, it's not time to do away, you know, stop using the wipes, because it is, it's still present out there this year. Weird year for weather. Also, our annual calendars came out.
Thank you. I got one, I got one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred.
Under items.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anybody else under public comment? I have, everybody else I have is under a certain item. Okay. It's in there, you're speaking on an ordinance, correct? You want to speak now? Okay, I'll follow you up under the item then.
Okay, we'll move to our first item, which is Information Consent Calendar. There's five items. I ask you to read those, please, Liz.
Item number one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of October fifth, two thousand ten. Item number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, fiscal year two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, environmental enhancement and mitigation program grant application for the Central Galt Interchange Landscape Project. Number four, extension of contract with Moore Twining Associates Incorporated to provide analytical laboratory testing of drinking water and wastewater samples. And number five, health benefit renewal.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion, we accept the consent calendar.
Seconded. Any further discussion? If none, I'll call for the roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Councilwoman Haines.
Aye.
Councilwoman Powers.
Aye.
Mayor Shelton.
Aye. Scheduled matters, regular calendar, City Attorney's Office.
An interim urgency ordinance of the City of Galt, of the City of Galt prohibiting the establishment and operation of commercial marijuana-related activities.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Liz indicated, presented for your consideration this evening, is an urgency ordinance. An urgency ordinance, in order to be adopted, requires four affirmative votes, and if you do adopt this ordinance this evening, it becomes effective immediately, and it is valid for a period of forty-five days unless the council extends it, which would be an option. The reason I am bringing this ordinance before you this evening for your consideration relates to Proposition nineteen, which is on the November second ballot. Proposition nineteen, if it passes, will legalize certain activities related to the use and possession of marijuana in this state. One of the items that is included in Proposition nineteen is that it allows cities and counties to license the commercial, certain commercial uses related to marijuana, such as sales, use of marijuana on licensed premises. One of the concerns that I have in reviewing Proposition nineteen is that while it clearly states that cities have the authority to regulate these types of commercial uses of marijuana, what it does not include is a statement that in the absence of a city deciding to adopt such regulations, that these commercial uses are unlawful. If you go into the actual text of Prop nineteen, at the front end, in the findings, it does clearly state that one of its purposes is to ensure that localities maintain control over the commercial uses of marijuana. But when you go into the part of Proposition nineteen that actually changes the law, there's no such statement that says that if a city chooses not to license, that such commercial uses are prohibited. By way of example, there's several other statutes that give cities authority to enact regulations. For example, we have the authority to enact development impact fees. Well, if we choose not to enact those fees, doesn't mean people can't develop, they can develop, they just don't pay the fee. Another area is in parking regulations. Cities authorized to enact parking controls. Well, if we don't enact parking controls, it doesn't mean that people can't park, it just means we don't have any regulations, it's a free-for-all. And that's exactly my concern with the marijuana-related businesses. If we don't have regulations in place, is it in fact a free-for-all? So, the purpose of this urgency ordinance is to maintain the status quo after November second, because if Prop nineteen passes, it becomes effective the next day. So, this ordinance, at least in the City of Galt, would prohibit any commercial activity related to marijuana uses after November second. It would give the City Council, in the event that Prop nineteen does pass, an opportunity to take a step back, to decide whether you want to authorize commercial uses of marijuana within this jurisdiction, and if so, what type of regulations are appropriate for this community. So, again, the purpose of this urgency ordinance is to maintain the status quo until we have an opportunity to see what happens on November second, and then come up with a thoughtful response that is appropriate for this community. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? Any comments or questions?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have anything either. I will add that I believe that it, I concur with your comments, Steve, and I believe that the interim, you know, that urgency ordinance, it does give us some time to determine what we're going to do for our consideration of if it does get passed.
Because of the fact that it's only good for forty-five days, if Prop nineteen passes on the second, then we will have to come back to the council within that forty-five day period in order to ask for you to extend the ordinance. If it does not pass, if Prop nineteen does not pass, then we'll just let it expire, and the issue goes away.
And there were some public comments, okay.
Woody? After Woody, Mr. Epstein.
First off, thank you, Senator Turner, you're getting a little drama going here. That ordinance is going to pass, and it's going to pass by seventy-eight percent, if you've been reading and doing your surveys. And, then the next is for Don. Don, I have about a hundred and fifty people sign this paper, mostly seniors, how good a job you've been doing.
Thank you.
And they told me to make sure and tell you.
I appreciate that, Woody.
Some of the mobile parks are all over town when we have our meetings and stuff. And... Yeah, last week, we made a couple more businesses mad with our little ordinances and stuff. And fifty-two years ago, I was on the Norwalk Council. I got here the same way she did. We had a councilman die. The odds are, she's staying in, ninety percent. If you just read them all, right down in California, she's a sure vote. But anyhow, that's how I got in, and we had Mayor Zimmerman had a little rule. When these guys over here bring up all this garbage about sign ordinances and all that, we called it the junk ordinance. We had two hundred seats in the Norwalk City Hall. Most of them businessmen, businesses in our city. They'd turn around, and the mayor says, "Well, this is another junk one. We don't do nothing in this town to hurt a business." So, we'd talk about it up there, then we'd turn it out here, and he'd say, "How many want this, how many don't?" Most of the time, it was gone, no banner, we didn't fight about banners or any of that junk. That's the way this should be run here. I mean, this is a little hick town. Norwalk's a big town, but we wanted to keep our businesses. And then after I was on the City Council, we turned around and built the City Hall, four stories tall. And by the way, we had a lot of donations back in those days. My dad gave three twenty-acre partials, we had four big dairies in the Norwalk area, for parks. The spot that the City Hall's setting on now, that was another dairyman. And in that, we put a juvenile courthouse, DMV, city employees in the bottom, and all these department heads all down the other side. It's a beautiful building, if you ever go to Norwalk. And I think that's it. That's all I'm going to say, because I've got five pages. Anyhow, I just thought I'd tell you about the junk ones, those are two guys out there, and to keep your businesses in town. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Reuben Epstein. I live in Galt, and I also have a business in Galt. The business happens to be on Fourth Street, just up the street from FHB, which I have been told means First Hemp Bank. The window of the store only says FHB, which could also mean Feathers, Heads, and Beaks selling chicken parts. The point my plan to make is that for most people, they have no idea what it is. We found out what it is when people were knocking on our business and asking where the cannabis club was. And we were somewhat surprised, this was about two weeks ago, I guess. Talked to the people who are running it, and I didn't get a whole lot of positive response. I tried to explain that my concern with their being there is not their customers. I think medical marijuana makes sense, although I think it should be sold in drugstores. It would be better controlled, less hassles, so on. But until the laws are changed to do that, we'll live with what we have. I didn't know if they had a permit or anything else, and that wasn't my concern, that was the city's concern. My concern is not their customers, it's the people who will come shopping at night with crowbars, because they can't tell where the store is that has marijuana, and they will break into my building looking for it. I've been in the building for thirty-one years. I am not anxious to have people breaking in looking for things. We haven't had that happen, but I am very afraid that it might. I put up some signs saying that the cannabis club is at two two nine Fourth Street. I was told that, you know, they didn't like that, it was not their proper name. Except, that's all we knew, because that's what people came asking for. So, I changed the signs to say, "The First Hemp Bank is there." And I was told, "That wasn't nice, I still had their name up." So, the signs are still up, I'm still very concerned, there's still no name on the building other than FHB. And since you're not doing anything directly with them, except the lawsuit, and you are considering the ordinance, I guess the only thing I can ask for is that if the ordinance comes in, and then you start licensing buildings for selling medical marijuana, that you add a provision that they have to have proper identification. I have seen things on television, in the papers, lots of businesses doing this all over California, and as far as I know, they all have some sort of a name up, they have some idea of what they're doing, so if somebody drives by and is looking where to break in for marijuana, they know which place to go to. And I don't think that that's too much to ask. You know, this is an area where there's lots of crime, people steal it, people rob other people, they shoot other people, trying to get it, to resell it, to use themselves, you know, and law enforcement is not my job. I have a small business, I can't spend a lot of money for a security system, I don't think FHB is going to buy me one. So, you know, I'm basically stuck, except for labeling my building the best I can. But I hope the city can do something in the way of ordinances and so on, that will provide some protection for people in situations like mine. Because I'm sure people coming at night heard this graph someplace on Fourth Street, they're not going to be able to figure out which place it is, and they may break into five places before they finally decide where. So, you know, I'm just asking for some sort of protection that might be available through the ordinance or otherwise. Thanks.
Thank you, Reuben.
Thank you.
That's all I have for the side.
Any other comments from council?
Nope.
Not?
Ready to move on.
I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move that we accept the recommendation as stated.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Time? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Councilwoman Haines.
Aye.
Councilwoman Powers.
Aye.
Mayor Shelton.
Aye. Next item, please.
Number two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt adopting Chapter five point six oh of the Galt Municipal Code regarding Assembly Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This ordinance was introduced at the last regular meeting, and it is presented for your adoption this evening. Just to recap, what this ordinance provides is that an assembly hall, which would be any auditorium, large facility that would house fifty or more people, that wants to hold private events, would be required to get a license. There are a fair amount of exemptions in this ordinance. One of the exemptions is that if the use, if the business already has a conditional use permit, they are not required to get an assembly hall license. If they have a license from the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, they are not required to get a license. If they do not want to hold events that involve the consumption of alcoholic beverages, then they're also not required to get a license. The way this ordinance is structured is it requires a license to be applied for on an annual basis. There is no fee for this license. In the event that the applicant is dissatisfied with the decision of the police chief on this application, it is appealable to the city manager, and then appealable from there to the City Council if the applicant so desires. The ordinance contains some items that are required conditions on a license, and one of those particular conditions is that for any event where there is going to be alcoholic beverages available, consumed, that the applicant is required to have security at the ratio of one guard for every seventy-five guests, or portion thereof after. So, for eighty people, it would require two security guards. In the event that there is an event at a licensed facility that does not involve alcoholic beverages, then there is no requirement to provide security. The rest of the conditions primarily relate to providing notice to law enforcement in advance of an event, and providing cooperation to law enforcement during an event. So, that's the summary of the ordinance that is before you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may ask.
We have a few speakers.
A few.
It was a joke.
You want to start it?
Counsel, you want to hear from the public first?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, Tim Manis.
Good evening. My name's Tim Manis, and I live in Sacramento County. I'm a small business owner and provide technical services for events here at the Estrelita Ballroom. The good sides of my income come from small venues like this ballroom. Nearly all the money I make through these events goes straight back into my business with equipment purchases made here in Sacramento County. This ordinance that gives the police department the final say in who does business at the Estrelita Ballroom, and forces additional outside security to be hired, would not be beneficial to me or other small businesses like mine here in Galt. This new restriction would make it very, very difficult for the average person or promoter to host an event at the Estrelita Ballroom. You must remember, we are in a recession. Times are not good. These events are not only positive for people's morale, but they also encourage people to get out on the town and spend money on gifts, gas, clothing, baked goods, grocery items, equipment rentals, taxi services, and food at restaurants here in town. It's these events that make ends meet for everyone here in Galt, and enforcing another ordinance that would hurt these revenues would be very short-sighted, and would only hurt the little guys such as Mr. Hanky, myself, and others who rely on the ballroom to bring in business. I've worked with Mr. Hanky for over ten years on dozens of events. My experience has been entirely positive with Mr. Hanky's staff and security. It's been that of the opposite with hired security outside of his management. We find that outside security officers are undertrained and unmotivated to work with our team to help provide a safe environment. Just like everyone here, we want nothing more than safety for everyone, and having additional outside security is not the answer, nor is having the chief of police have the final say as to who can and can't host an event here at the ballroom. I say let Mr. Hanky be in charge of his own hall, and let him have the final say as to who can and can't rent his facility. He knows what's at stake, and it's he and his family who are best at managing the hall. Putting the facility under the managing hand of the police department will surely kill the Estrelita Ballroom. I say keep the police department from running John out of business, and all those who rely on the ballroom to help make ends meet will thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Ted Anderson. After Mr. Anderson, Al Baldwin, and then Tracy Grubbs.
Ted Anderson, retired government worker. I live at nine one seven Scarletwood Court, Galt, California. For disclosure purposes, I would like to identify that Mr. Hanky has allowed me to put election signs in his downtown area, but that has nothing to do with the presentation that I want to make. Last night, there was a forum for individuals running for the council. A question was asked in regards specifically to this issue for those individuals to answer, so that you would have all the information. I think it would be important for you to know the responses from those nine people that are running for councils as to how they viewed this issue. Seven of them indicated that the police shouldn't have any control, or that there should be a compromise so that both parties could work together. Two individuals supported the ordinance that you have in its entirety. Now, I think that would be important for you to base your decision on. One of the issues I see here is I think that you can end up with a win-win situation with the city and Mr. Hanky. When I was here last council meeting, I thought that there was a compromise, and it looked like to me that it was very, very close. Some things happened, and that fell through. I would urge you to go back and try and redo that compromise. In the ethical background or makeup of Galt, there's a significant group of people that use that ballroom. If you take that away, then they don't have that venue. And I think council represents those people, and if I were you, I would go back and take another look, and I would recommend and hope that you could develop a compromise that fulfills both the owner and the city's purposes, and I think that you could do that, and that would be my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and thank you for your honesty.
Al Baldwin, then Tracy Grubbs.
Good evening, Al Baldwin.
Good evening, Al Baldwin. One of the concerns, citizens of Galt and believe me, Galt's a city of character and with or without a pot shop. But nevertheless, uh, this little ordinance tonight, I think, is great. Everybody wants safety. The challenge I have with it is, is that it can't be fully discussed with council members at this time because you have one that's leaving, another one that's a temporary fill-in, and only two that'll be here for the next two years. And what I'm suggesting is, and I don't think it's going to hurt the ordinance at all, you wait until you have a full council, which would be the first week or two weeks of November. They all are informed about it. They all have their ideas about it. And I think it would be great for communication with the city to have them discuss it and make the decision. The discussion is good. They need to talk to the parties themselves. This is not a "we're going to do it or else" type thing. It needs to be discussed. It needs to be open and this is one way you can get the public involved. I know it's a very sensitive area. It's been proven that it is over the past few weeks. But at the timing right now, if it wasn't the, the council changing so drastically, I could see it. But it, it's too much of a drastic change for the council right now. And I think you need to have, and especially the new people that are coming in possibly, that they are understanding it even more because it's become a focal point in getting elected. And they've dug into it and they're digging into it maybe more than, than some people think. Communication is the key. They may have other ideas and it won't be postponed. I would say the maximum would be the second meeting in November, which would take care of any Christmas or any kind of celebrations that might happen. You would still have this ordinance, I'm, if it's approved. But I would strongly suggest that you wait until a full council is on there. And if you don't, one's leaving, maybe two's leaving, and only two is left on there and you'll have three brand-new people that may or may not agree with it. It needs to be discussed. It needs to be thoroughly looked into by a new council so that everything can come out. Uh, discussions have been made probably with some of these people and they've been informed maybe on some things that maybe you're not even informed yet on. It's, it's a communication thing and disclosure for the city. You need this openness. You need, you need it. Uh, it's my recommendation and you take it for what it's worth. But I, I think with the new council, you're going to get a lot better response from the public and the people individually that are involved with this thing. So, think hard, please.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Tracy Grove, and then Adam Meredith.
Hi, Tracy Grove, City of, I live in the city. Um, I'm going to kind of wing this. Um, I tried to read through this. It's a little tough reading for, you know, normal person, the ordinance. I agree a little bit with Mr. Baldwin. Um, the timing really is wrong. Um, there's only three elected officials, one leaving, one that you appointed, and one empty seat. So, overall, the timing is horrible, but the ordinance itself is not needed. I grew up in Galt. Um, I remember when we were planning my wedding reception and you look around town where there's someplace you can afford, in the Grange Hall. I mean, we're talking January of nineteen seventy-three and it was someplace we could go. We served alcohol, nobody got killed, was no big issues, people got home. Growing up in Galt, I've watched, um, we used to have two bars down by where Estrelita Ballroom is now, the four-seventeen and the club. And, um, you know, there was issues then. And then Fonz and Hinky and them, they all came in and they cleaned that whole area up and now it's someplace you can take your family, you can have all kinds of events there. And up around the corner is the Grange Hall. This ordinance is putting a lot of undue stress on these places that have been there for us our whole lives. And I don't see the reason why you need this. I think you're going to be pushing people to have parties at their homes because if they can get away with it for that reception that they're going to have five hundred people, you know, there and you guys might have the police out there to shut them down, they don't have anything to lose in the future. Maybe they're going to have a ticket, maybe something's going to happen. But you're pushing people out of an organized place, someplace that you do have some control over, and sending them out where there isn't any control. It's not needed. These events have been held forever in Galt. I've been here my whole life. This is really an unnecessary, um, financial stress to put on these places. I don't think public safety is a big issue. We haven't had a lot of incidences. And we can have incidences anywhere, whether there's alcohol or not alcohol, and it could be at a city-owned facility. So, you really need to put some thought into this. Um, this isn't right. Um, it's not needed and you need to let our businesses continue to grow in Galt instead of trying to stop them. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Tracy.
Adam Meredith, then Mariella Joe.
My name is Adam Meredith and I live in the city of Galt. And I'm here to speak against the ordinance. And, uh, one of my big problems is that you guys, uh, want to bring in security from outside of Galt. And the big thing about that is the people that work at, at Estrelita Ballroom for John and for Heather, we know the people that come in. We know who's not supposed to be with who. We know, you know, which gangs, you know, if this person's a gang's member. We've lived in Galt all of our lives. We know who the bad people are and we know who the good people are. And we try to keep the bad people out of Estrelita Ballroom. John Hinky and Heather Hinky run a very tight ship at the Estrelita Ballroom. I don't know where most of these comics are, or comments are coming from saying that, you know, all these bad things happen at the Estrelita Ballroom. We, we run a really good, you know, business down there. John, you know, is a great guy to work for. He makes sure that there is no, no problems there. He's right there with us at the door, making sure that, you know, everything goes right. And my, my biggest problem is that you guys want to bring in, you know, security people to come down here and just stand at a door and let whoever they want into the ballroom, not knowing who they are and where they come from. These people won't know anything. So, just be there to, you know, stand at the door. That's basically how I see it. They, they will be no help. And I, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not for this. Uh, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mariella Joe, then after that, Sean Farmer.
Hi, my name is Mariella Joe and I reside in the city of Galt. I feel that this council is being racist against Hispanics by preventing us on having quinceañeras in Galt. We as taxpayers, we should have the right to have a quinceañera as part of our culture. I'm against this ordinance because it would increase our cost to have this celebration. And why should I have to spend my money somewhere else if this is my community? I'm here to represent my family and the Hispanic community also. The Estrelita Ballroom is one of the last places left that rents to the Hispanic community. Now, the city, which has already banned these events at their buildings, wants to make it harder for private buildings to host these events. And I also think that John Hinky should be allowed to run his own business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Farmer, then John Hinky.
Waiting for the clock to reset.
You're good.
Okay. My name is Sean Farmer. I live in Galt. Um, and basically, I ask the council this. What is the real reason behind this ordinance? What is the ordinance going to accomplish? It seems the one main thing that this keeps getting mentioned in the ordinance and stands out is the attempt to regulate and oversee the consumption of alcohol. Businesses such as ours provide a place where families can assemble and celebrate and even drink if need be. Our businesses provide a controlled environment on private property for those people to exercise their constitutional right to assemble. If businesses like ours, referring to the Estrelita Ballroom, did not exist, people aren't going to stop celebrating. They're going to celebrate as usual in their own homes, public places, on public streets, in an uncontrolled and with no authority. When we tell our patrons that the cost of renting our facility is going to go up fifty percent due to city regulations on security, they will simply be priced out of the market and they'll go out and have their events out in the public. This will have the reverse effect that I think this ordinance is trying to accomplish. Our police services will be then faced with dealing with these events on a public level. If you know your history like I do, you may remember our government at one time thought that imposing regulations or rules where alcohol is present would help the public end crime. But in the nineteen twenties, prohibition did the opposite. People went about their way, unsupervised, against the law. Crime was worse, the economy was worse, police forces were exhausted trying to enforce it. Under this new ordinance, our police forces will be wasting, will be wasted regulating these permits, trying to do walkthroughs to count party participants, checking for so-called fire issues, fire code issues, et cetera. Our business already abides by current fire codes. Attendance is strictly regulated by our current staff. So, whether you are someone who drinks alcohol or not, you have to know that this is another example of our city government trying to control what we as citizens do on our own private property. I ask our council, what is the cost of this ordinance? What is the cost going to come at? Our police officials already talk of thin staff and not being able to keep up with current crime, yet they have to take on more petty responsibilities under this ordinance to enforce these ordinances and permits. How much money will this ordinance bring to our community? Well, I'll tell you how much this ordinance is going to bring. It's going to bring zero to a community. It's going to cost the community. It's going to cost the city taxpayer dollars. Much like many of the, much like much of legislation in our government that gets passed, it costs money and does not make it. There will be many administrative costs in using these permits, enforcing them, legal costs, and so on. I don't know about the rest of the community, but it looks like another wasteful way of using my hard-earned tax dollars. We as citizens and business owners just want to make a living and conduct our businesses free of too much government oversight. As business owners, we want to be allowed to conduct our business without constant intervention, intervention and a red tape from our government. Every time I turn around, I hear business owners in Galt talking about how difficult it is to deal with the city of Galt. I see a couple of business owners in the crowd now that have told me stories about how difficult it was for them to get through certain things with the city in order just to go about business as usual. Galt has been labeled one of the most unfriendly business communities. I'd even know of some businesses that have left Galt such as, to go to cities such as El Grove and took in their important tax dollars with them. My family has been from Galt for four generations. We have been business owners, landowners, farmers, and even community figures. We have chosen to stay in this small town and conduct business here when others have left. We want nothing more to continue to do business in this town. The troubling thing is that our elected leaders do one thing. They talk about making Galt more business-friendly and then do the opposite. Talk is cheap. Our leaders say one thing and then do the other. Our city will bend over backwards to bring in big-box business to Galt and then ignore the needs of the small existing businesses, sometimes even trying to pass ordinance to help them or to impose financial hardships. I don't think our city really cares about the small businesses of Galt. As long as they can get a big-box store like Walmart in here once every decade, they can look like they're being pro-business. They can even get their pictures on the front page of the newspaper, holding some fancy shovels in a, in a groundbreaking ceremony. While on the back page in the small print where the ordinance are listed, is where those same shovels are being used to bury the small businesses of Galt. Our strict government control needs to go. Sadly, I think that the, this, the idea has been forgotten about free enterprise. You as our city and government leaders have invested with a great responsibility. It is up to you to preserve the idea of free enterprise and liberty in this country which our ancestors came to here in the first place for. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, John Hinky, then Heather Farmer.
Well, if you look around the room, you'll see that Magical Place is not here. His wife works for Royce Jeffries and he can't speak. That's why he's not here. And the Grange Hall is so upset that they won't even show up. They are not going to go and do nothing with this ordinance and they're going to be a pain in the butt. And basically, I probably will be too, if you pass it in its current condition. If you give me some slack and get away from the, the, uh, the, uh, security contractor, I might consider doing something with this ordinance. But other than that, I think all you're doing is adding a financial burden to my business, costing my clients more money. Therefore, they'll be going to the American Legion, the Elks, Elks Lodge, the Moose Hall. It'll make me uncompetitive and it'll be very difficult to keep it open. I don't appreciate this slap in the face and I hope that we can do something to make this better. I hope you can postpone this, just like some people said, till we get a full council. Not against anybody's vote, don't care about nothing. I want it fair and legal. And I know what you guys have already voted on, so definitely I don't want to vote on this council. That's for sure. But you guys do what you want to do and I'll do what I want to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hinky.
Heather Farmer, then Jean Davenport.
Hello, I'm Heather Farmer. Um, I'd like to start with going over, well, obviously, I'm like almost laugh, so everybody's kind of said everything I was going to say, but, um, everyone talks about how the council's so business-friendly, but yet something like this ordinance is like a big example of how you're not business-friendly, at least not small business-friendly. Uh, you say you want the police department to have a relationship with these types of businesses, just like the Estrelita Ballroom, but passing an ordinance like this in the fashion that it's been written, it's not going to forge any type of relationship. I think it might actually do the opposite. If this ordinance is so important to public safety and you feel that the citizens of Galt are truly concerned about public safety at events in our facilities, then I ask you to hold this item until we have an elected council. A fully elected council, that's five people that these citizens, the public that you're trying to protect, has picked to serve them. Make the rules for their city. I'm going to end with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davenport, then Ben Rosenberg.
Hi there, Jean Davenport, live in the city of Galt. And I think this, this is, you, you should stop what you're doing right now. It's unfair to the community. It's unfair to a certain segment of this community. And it is a partial council. You were appointed, Mary Lou, no disrespect, you were appointed by a person who shouldn't have been voting anyway with the spirit of what a city council is. He lived out of town, he owned a home in another city for over a year, and he still brought issues to the table here and dealt with it. It's wrong. We should wait till you get a fully elected council. And if you do pass this tonight, if I'm elected, I'm bringing it back because this does not belong on the books today. You haven't talked with them enough. This is against a certain segment of our community. Our community needs support. For the life of me, with the money that you moved around to do, to do the redevelopment downtown, yet not one day has that farmer's market been downtown. You put it in the parking lot, you put it on Lincoln Street, you should, you, you need to put it where it belongs and let it grow. You need to start bringing people to the city. You're not doing it the right, my personal opinion is you're not following a good game plan to make something grow and prosper. This ordinance hurts somebody. Why don't you change some language in what the police officers can do? Why don't you let them moonlight on their own time in the city? Then they could be hired as a security guard. They know the same people. I mean, use some common sense in your approach to this if you're going to bring this. This is such a blanket unfair ordinance. It doesn't make sense. It, it really appalls me that we're even considering doing this to existing businesses that have been here for how long? I mean, you don't treat them the same way, let's say, at Farland Ranch, if they have a gathering. There's alcohol served, there's party. Oh, different clientele. That's ridiculous. It's, it's the wrong way to think about things that happen in the city and how, as we do things as a community. Because we are a community first. I've only been here seven years. I love this city. I love this community because everybody does get to know each other. And you could, I can't believe I agree with Al Baldwin, what he has. But seriously, that's, the point is, we can come here and, and you do, we used to regular share and, and we're very passionate in what we say, but we're very sincere in what we say. I think you just need to stop this. Don't let this go forward tonight. Give them the benefit of the doubt. Let's bring it back to the table, let's work something out because this is just wrong for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Ben Rosenberg.
Good evening. My name is Ben Rosenberg. I live in Sacramento County as well. I run a small event planning business. I've been working with John for past ten years. And I feel this ordinance is a hundred percent wrong. Not only will it stomp the growth of small businesses like mine in the area, but it also will take away, more importantly, the last controlled supervised and organized venue that we have in the area or venues. So, let's please keep Galt more, uh, business-friendly and instead of taking money away from the area, let's put more money back into the area. So, please, stop with this ordinance while we still can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you. Comments from council? You want to go first? You want to go first?
You know, I just want to say that, uh, we have been listening-
You know, I just wanna say that, uh, we have been listening to you. And it is hard to sit up here and make decisions that we know were affecting people. It's my understanding after talking with the staff that, uh, I feel like our staff has met with Mr. Hinke and his attorney several times. We have compromised, we have listened to your concerns, and we have made changes, uh, because of what you've said. Someone said that, uh, government, that this government was around freedom, which it is, but one of the main functions of the government is safety. That is probably the number-one function of any government, whether it's local or federal. And what I've heard from this community is that's their number-one concern. We passed Measure R. The city even passed a sprinkler, uh, ordinance, which cost people more money, wasn't exactly friendly to the developers and the businesses, but it was about safety. And it was something I voted for, even though I've always felt like we needed to let the market decide on things. I feel that, um, the staff has done everything they can. I resent some of the things that have been said about our police department. I think they're a very good police department. And I also feel that some statements were made that aren't true. The police department is not the final word. You can appeal to the city manager. You can appeal to the city council. Uh, as far as the forum last night, I attended, and it was really clear to me that some of the people really were not aware of what the ordinance said. For example, one gentleman mentioned, uh, something about getting a permit to have a birthday party. Well, this isn't about a permit, and it's not about residences. It's a license. It's an annual license. It shouldn't prevent any business from acting. You know, yes, it's gonna cost more money, I give you that, but safety, people's lives, and we have lost people's lives, are more important. So I want you to know, I will be supporting this ordinance.
Any other comments?
Yeah, actually, I do. I think one of my biggest concerns, and I think it's a concern on everybody's mind, is too much government control. I think we're over-regulated. I think, uh, we're burdened with additional regulations and costs that are passed on to the businesses, the businesses that they do business with, and ultimately, the consumer. And I don't think that's fair. Now, in this case that we're trying- that we've got presented us today, it truly only affects a few businesses in the city of Galt. And I do understand there can be some concerns about some events or issues that occur at these events. And I don't think this is gonna solve the problem. 'Cause the more I thought about it, the more I realized that it takes a lot more than a security guard to stop somebody who truly wants to do whatever they wanna do. Back in eighty-three, nineteen eighty-three, I left the U.S. Navy, and one of my first jobs was a security guard. I had my own guard card, and I went to various events, uh, high school graduations, um, various parties that were, uh, wanted security there. And there were very few times that we really, we ever encountered any problems. And in those few times that those problems occurred, it would've happened whether we were there or not. It didn't matter, because when somebody's either drunk or, or somebody's out of control who enters the, uh, comes into the party or out from outside, they're gonna do whatever they intend to do. You're just not gonna stop them unless you truly have law enforcement there who can, uh, can take care of it. Um, I just don't think it's right that we burden them with that additional, uh, cost and, uh, uh, time. Another thing is, the few businesses we are talking about, we are talking about businesses that are ran by local residents who have been here for a lifetime, and I think that does mean something, and I think their word should mean something. So, we're supposed to be small business-friendly, so I think really what we should be doing is, we should go back to the drawing table. We should be talking to these, uh, business owners and these residents, because, uh, they are the bedrock of this city. They're a big part of us, and we need to recognize that and do a better effort of reaching out to them. Um, I just feel that we can do a better job, and I just can't support this. And it- I would recommend tonight that if this council wants to do anything, and it was brought up earlier, and I totally agree with it, is we really need to make sure that we wait, and before you pass something like this, you need a full council that has been, uh, voted in by the citizens, so that, you know, uh, it can be clearly, uh, reviewed, and then, uh, a full council can make that decision. And then, in between now and then, it will also give an opportunity for the council or the city to reach out to these businesses, and reach out and hopefully find another compromise that we might be able to work out in that timeframe. So, that would be my suggestion. I'm not gonna support the ordinance, and I think we should move forward, uh, more cautiously.
Mary Lou, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, I do have some comments. Um, I was there last night at the forum, and I listened to what a lot of people had to say. And I had an epiphany today, and it was really kind of interesting, before any of you started speaking tonight. And I ended up at a coffee shop with some ex-police officers and some police officers now, and I mean no disrespect to anyone. Um, but I agree that this ordinance goes a little bit too far. And, um, uh, I think that we need to work on getting a better ordinance, and I agree with Al, that we shouldn't pass it with just four council members up here. Um, I- there's only one little thing that I have a problem with, and that is, you know, you can be in Assembly Hall, and you can't have alcohol, but you catered it, people with alcohol could come in. I would hope that there would be some way that we could come back to know that if there are parties here with alcohol. Um, but, uh, talking to some of, some of- I'm not gonna say former whichever police officer, but, uh, you know, they, they did say some good things about, um, some of these places, and said, you know, "If you hire security guards, the truth of the matter is, they can only do so much, and they're gonna have to call the police anyway." And, uh, a few of them actually said that, you know, they thought that some of the jobs that were being done with other security was all right now. So I, I'm gonna vote no on it tonight, and I, um, I just think we need to address some of the issues. We need to come back to the table with it.
I agree with the, uh, with the ordinance. You guys compromised, we compromised. I've listened to all of you, and I listened to part of it last night, and I did step out when you were answering your questions, 'cause there was three council members there. But anyway, with that said, I- one of the things that I would also like to see is, it was brought up by somebody in the room last night at the forum, that I think it makes more sense to have a sunset clause on it, and we do something like this. Unfortunately, when we were meeting, and we weren't agreeing all the time, you know, but for whatever reason, I don't know what happened, but that dialogue in the meetings just kinda stopped. So I think we need to continue that, and I agree with you guys, that we need to do something, but the vote ain't gonna happen. And I believe it needs to come back, you know, when we have, uh, three councils, so we'll have five.
Well, I think if there's a vote and there's two, two, it dies right there, does it not? It would have to be brought by- back by the next council as it is, correct? So, it's immaterial.
Right. That was my point. But thanks for pointing that out again.
No problem. It's clarity.
So, you can- I can ask for a motion, but I don't think you're gonna get a second. You wanna make the motion?
No, I don't think we need to. I'll make a motion that we turn down the, uh, the ordinance as submitted.
I won't support that unless we're gonna be bringing- are you referring to bringing it back at full election?
No, I'm just saying, what I'm doing is, I'm just- what I'm doing, I'm making a motion to deny and not pass this ordinance. And, uh, or tonight, and it doesn't matter, the next council can still bring it back. Is that correct?
Um, that's correct, but, you know, whether the motion passes or not, if there's not a motion to adopt it this evening, then the matter dies unless, say, future council wants the matter, uh, brought back to them for consideration.
Well, I'd like to get a vote on record, if you don't mind. I think that's reasonable. I think a lot of people showed up here today, and I think they'd like to know how we stand.
Do you have a motion, and do you have a second?
One more thing. If the council would like the dialogue to continue and for this to be brought back after the election, then we'd need that direction, otherwise, staff will let the thing die entirely. And so we just need direction from council on what exactly it is you want us to do.
I would like to see the vote done, as requested. I put a vote out there.
I said there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
Can I have the weight?
Sure.
Is the vote that we're never, ever bringing it back?
My motion is to deny and turn down the, uh, ordinance that's submitted by tonight. And I wanna go on record as saying that I don't approve or agree with it, for the reasons I've already stated. And if the next council wants to come back, and somebody on that council decides they would like to bring this issue back, they can do so. And it still doesn't prohibit the city from reaching out and working with the people and the businesses.
Is that, is that correct?
What the motion would do would be to deny the proposal, the precise proposal that is before you this evening, and it does not, uh, restrict future councils as it relates to any regulation.
I second.
Okay, well, you did. We already had it first, it's like a word in discussion. So we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay. Vice Mayor Payne?
No.
Councilmember Haynes?
Uh, to deny it, yes.
Councilmember Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Sutton?
No. So be it.
Now, I have a suggestion, and I have a recommendation, that staff continue to dial- at least offer up the dialogue, and I would like for it to be on the second meeting in December.
Bring it back?
Bring this back.
And a motion?
That's a motion, that I very rarely make.
Hang on a second. Question for ya. He's making a motion to bring it back. If we voted on it, can he do that? If you made a motion-
No, it's not.
It can only be brought back by somebody who didn't vote for it, is that correct?
The motion did not pass.
The motion- oh, that's only if the motion passes.
So I don't know which is easier. I would like to continue the dialogue with the businesses.
I agree.
I agree with that, too.
Can we agree- we agree on that? Wait a minute, John, don't come back. John, wait.
He's leaving.
Oh, I'm sorry. No. I'm trying to help work this out, okay? Just wait a minute, John, please.
We've already voted it out. We would like for a dialogue. I don't have a problem with that, so you don't have to sit there humming and all.
Oh, no, I'm not humming and all. I'm trying to get this back in December.
But I don't think you need to make a motion. You just need to give direction, right? Am I correct?
Is it better for just give direction? Any council member can ask for something to be brought back.
As I understand, Mr. Mayor, as I understand your motion, it's move to continue this current ordinance, to direct staff to continue dialogue with the affected businesses, and bring the ba- matter back for further consideration at the second meeting in December. Is that your motion?
I don't think you can do that.
I know you voted it down.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I was just trying to clarify what your motion is. If that's not what you intended, then you need to correct it.
I'm trying to give direction. If it has to be in a motion, I'll make it into a motion to vote on it.
Yes, it does need to be in a motion.
It is in a motion. Then that's my motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion?
Can I- just one quick question, Randy. And I like what you're doing, and I appreciate it. But, um, if you bring it in, what was the timeframe to bring it back, when?
Second meeting in December.
Second meeting in December? Um, that would give the first council two meetings to review it and to address it. Okay, I'd be okay with that.
That's why I didn't wanna do it on the first one. I would say at least the second.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that was accurate. Okay, I would agree with that.
And I honestly believe between now and then, that we can continue the dialogue, you know, with the businesses.
Yeah, that's why I said, I agree.
Might be able to just narrow the compromise down just a little bit.
We can walk in here and-
You're not gonna agree.
Yep.
I know, your vote's not gonna change, and my vote's not gonna change.
No, but what is- what we are agreeing upon is that we wanna reach out and work with the community, and that's what's important to me. Everything else is already water under the bridge. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay.
I second. I'm sorry, I didn't second it.
Seconding. No further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Sutton?
Aye. Best compromise we can do at this time.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to staff.
Thirty minutes.
Okay. Next item?
An ordinance setting chapter two point one zero of the Galt Municipal Code regarding
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to proceed, or wait a minute?
Uh, I want- I think several of them are waiting, are leaving, so if you could just wait a moment.
You did a good thing. Yes, at least you did.
No, I'll be quiet.
Yeah, probably a good idea.
You have the floor now, sir.
Um, here are council members presented for your consideration this evening as an ordinance, uh, regarding the temporary street closures. Uh, this ordinance is recommended for adoption this evening. Uh, what this ordinance would do would be to establish rules for temporary street closures. Proposed ordinance delegates to the manager, authority to grant a permit for temporary street closures, and, uh, also, if, uh, he deems necessary to, uh, unilaterally, uh, direct closure of a street for such items as construction, storms, parades, celebrations, or other events. Happy to respond, any questions you have?
Comments from council?
No, no comment.
No? Uh, and do we have a motion on the floor?
I move to approve the recommendation.
I second.
And second it. Any further discussion? None? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember- Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Sutton?
Aye. Okay, next item is city manager's office.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My pleasure to present to you the update on the city's capital improvement program, uh, through September two thousand and ten. This is what we do on a quarterly basis, which staff brings back the current year's capital projects to give you an update on how we're doing on making progress towards accomplishing those, um, the completion of those projects. The- there are thirty-eight capital projects in the current year's budget, some very major projects, such as the Central Gulf Interchange, Walker Park, a number of water, wastewater projects, some more minor projects, such as streetlight retrofits and so forth, but a wide variety of, uh, projects that, uh, that cost multi-millions of dollars to complete. And so, it's a very aggressive project and program. We're pleased that we're making a lot of progress on a lot of these projects. Some of them have already been completed. As you look through the list, some of them are already show completion, other ones are nearing completion, other ones were just kind of in the initial stages. Um, I'm not gonna go through all the projects, but I will kind of draw your attention to a couple of the bigger items that are on here, and I would encourage the council members and the public that are interested in any of these projects to go online. We're gonna post this information on our website. You can go on and look at our Complete Capital Improvement Program and find out what projects are upcoming, um, and see what, uh, what your city government is up to. Couple of the ones that are coming up, uh, under the general improvement category that are kind of exciting, we're just, uh, we just are issuing the request for proposals right now, is the Central Gulf Corridor Rehabilitation Project and the Union Pacific Railroad Parking Lot and Landscaping Project down on the Four Street property. These are two projects we've been found in drawing books for a number of years that would improve, um, the access off of Central Gulf Interchange, down C Street, through Lincoln Way, and then ultimately, some improvements down along the, the nice brown dirt field we have in front of the railroad tracks we've been trying to do something with for a number of years. So, we're gonna finally start to see some work, uh, work come about with those projects. So that's, that's really exciting. On the park side, obviously, the big project we have going on right now is Walker Park. If you drive out there, uh, the corner of Elm and Sergeant, you can see a lot of work going on. We have a lot of the underground utilities, infrastructure in place, curb gutter sidewalks. Uh, we're gonna really start moving here pretty quick, but you can already see the things start to take place, from the fencing going up. And, uh, we're hoping to have that project, uh, completed this spring. Now, that's gonna take a while for the, the grass and the seed to really mature. So, for the natural turf, it's gonna take a little while to be able to play on, but the, the artificial turf will be, uh, ready to play, um, before the art, before the, the natural turf is. On the, on the transportation side of things, obviously, we, uh, just broke ground in the Central Interchange Project, and, um, that project is underway. And you're gonna start to see a lot of the big equipment moving fairly shortly. We already, um, have a lot of work going on with utility, the overhead wires and so forth that are going on, and other things that are gonna start to materialize. Um, we have a lot of pedestrian safety projects that are, that are on the books, uh, improvement around the high school, improvement all around Carillion to make flash, flashing lighted crosswalks in, in various locations, improve pedestrian access. We have things to continue work with, making, um, ADA improvements in various sidewalks and so forth. We have widening projects, um, continuing work on the Twin Cities Roundabout Interchange Project. The design is still underway on that, and just a number of other, um, exciting projects. Um, on the, on the water and wastewater side, we have a number of things that are gonna address upgrading the city's infrastructure, dealing with, uh, water lines, uh, the main, the main, uh, live oak lift station, Forest Main that we've been talking about for a number of years is, uh, is well underway in design, and we're hoping to start construction, construction before long. And, uh, the, since the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project is actually nearing completion, we're a couple of months away from that being completed, so that's gonna be exciting. So, a lot of things happening in the city, even though we are in a significant recession, there are a lot of projects moving forward, a lot of things for the residents to be, um, proud of and happy about. So, happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
I would just comment that I think we're doing pretty well, considering the economic situation, I mean.
Uh, the report is just information only, so it doesn't require any action?
Right.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Okay. Next item?
Thanksgiving Baskets two thousand and ten, and I'll make a confession for this staff report, it'll be really short, because it's supposed to be a consent calendar item.
I, I thought you were gonna give the staff report, Liz.
Oh, I can give the staff report.
Would you please?
Um, boys asked for your approval for the usage of the Littleton Center on Friday, November nineteenth, from three to eight PM, and Saturday, November twentieth, from six thirty to noon, and to waive all fees for the Thanksgiving Basket two thousand and ten, coordinated by St. Christopher's Church.
And that's like almost everyone in the community, too. It's every organization, every church.
It is a community effort.
It is.
Correct.
Yes.
It's good that we try to, for everybody here.
Yeah, we cro- we, we cross the line, we come together, and don't argue.
Correct.
Sorry, is there, uh, any questions for comments?
No, I'm just gonna make a motion, I think it's obvious that we're pretty much all in favor of it, so I move to approve it.
Motion's been made, and is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion or comments? Call for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Hi.
Councilmember Haynes?
I was listening, and I.
Councilmember Powers? Mayor Shutton?
Hi, thank you. Okay, communications, I think we have, uh, one or two items, one item?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Uh, just wanted to share that I had been contacted by, um, the Junior Warriors. Uh, and I think this will be coming back, that I got an email, um, and I think all council members did, with their concern about, um, being dropped from the city. So, I, I'm just bringing that to the attention of the council, that I did get that email. Also, I got a call from, uh, Chris Spire. Uh, he was expecting that this would have been on the agenda. I think that was his request when he appeared last, at the last council meeting. That was the direction to meet with him. I thought that's what the minutes were saying, that from the last meeting, um, the direction was given to the staff to meet with him and discuss putting it on the agenda.
I, I think the direction it was giving, given was for the mayor and staff to meet and discuss. And I provided some information to the city council last week about, about the item that was brought up. And so, if the council desires to agendize it, that's something the council can bring, bring forward and request that it be on the agenda.
So, he wasn't to be included in that discussion?
That wasn't the direction provided.
Okay.
That's not what I'd ask.
Okay. Uh, one other thing, I, I just wanted to throw this out there. I had a complaint from a gentleman that lives in the Quail Hollow subdivision saying his water pressure was really, really low. Um, even to the point where he couldn't flush his toilet adequately, I'll put it that way. So, I talked to some of the other people in the neighborhood, and they did not seem to have the same problem. So, I'm thinking maybe that was just, um, unique to his own home. So, I'm just sharing these citizens.
Do you have an address?
Um, I'm at home.
Okay, you can board it to staff, we can take a look at it.
Okay. I'm just sharing these, uh, concerns from the citizens.
He may have a ruptured line somewhere, I don't even know. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Okay, we will adjourn and, to the redevelopment agency. Gotta have the roll call, please.
Board members, Payne?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Shutton?
Here.
Probably comment?
I'm not speaker, sure.
Information consented, end items?
We have two items. The first one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of September seventh, two thousand and seven, and approval of the redevelopment agency warrants.
Any questions?
I think that date's wrong, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes of October, um... Yeah, I kept it wrong, for some reason, my... Okay, let's do this. Approval of the minutes of the meeting of October fifth.
Right.
And the second one is approval of the redevelopment agency warrant.
Right. Any further, any changes or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? None? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Hi.
Councilmember Haynes?
Hi.
Councilmember Powers?
Hi.
Mayor Shutton?
Hi.
We will adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City Clerk's report?
Uh, so today, just a couple reminders. Uh, on October twenty-first, we will have a beautification committee meeting at three thirty in the City Hall Community Room. On October twenty-seventh, there, there's a Measure R meeting at six PM in the Police Department Community Room. And October twenty-eighth, there's a public meeting regarding the Central Gulf Interchange from six to nine PM in the Police Community Room. Another reminder for everybody to vote on Tuesday, November second, on Election Day. That takes us to our next meeting as well.
Giddyup. I have a question on that note, and I was talking to Stevie about it earlier. And what I was suggesting, and I'd still like to discuss this possibly, on November second, being the election, I, we normally start a meetings at seven. Well, would anybody consider wanting to move that up to six? Most of the people that usually attend these meetings are here.
Is it, well, do you know, are we anticipating anything major that we'll be discussing, or?
Yeah, we're trying to make a, a quick meeting. And so, yeah, we should be able to get out here a reasonable time. The only, and we can certainly move it, the only issue with moving it is then somebody is used to showing up at seven, and they show up at seven, and the meeting's already over.
But we publish it, we'll put it in the paper, we'll, we'll have it out there on the internet. And if they do miss it, they can pick it up on, uh, Channel fourteen on Saturday as well. Yep, thank you. Oh, go to the library, thank you.
Is that, does everyone concur? That's, that works for me.
I'm, I'm with that.
We'll do six.[1662.88]